I call the order of regular meeting of the President and Board of Trustees of Majesny Park, Illinois for Monday, May 18, 2015. Please stand for the invocation led by Pastor Garrett Kemp from North Park Church of Christ on Elm Avenue, and Pledge of Allegiance led by Trustee Steve Johnson.
Lord, to come before you before your throne this evening praying for this night and this meeting in this place. Lord, I pray that you would be with those speaking, with those making decisions, that you would give them wisdom, that you would guide them in the true way to do what needs to be done. I pray that you would be with us and we would represent you in a way that honors you and that the things said and the things done tonight would honor you as well. In all these things, in the name of your almighty Son, Jesus the Christ, amen.
Those allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with one objective and justice for all.
Okay, will a clerk take roll call, please?
Mayor Bowlen?
Here.
Trustee Snodgrass?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Kid?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Bailey?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
The village attorney is here.
Thank you, Lord. We have a quorum. Next is approval of minutes from May 4, 2015, board meeting. I entertain a motion to approve.
No move, second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussions or changes? I see none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes have been approved. Next, we have treasurer's report. Tom Yoll.
Thank you, Your Honor. The treasurer's report reflects what the village received in motor fuel tax funds of $54,653.86. And total of all funds as of May 11 was $9,850,779.71.
Thank you, Tom. I entertain a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
No move, second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any discussions? I see none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Treasurer's report has been accepted. Next, under Communications, we have Harlem student Gabby Riley and teacher Kim Bozell. They are going to do a presentation for us about best buddies. So if you would like to come up and start your presentation, please do so.
Okay.
Turn the lights off, please.
Okay, so my name is Gabby Riley, and I would like to bring best buddies to the Harlem School District. Okay. Pardon. Best buddies were started by the same man that started Special Olympics. Anthony Schreiber had an aunt that was special needs and realized that they were a little more cast off from society, and he did not want that for like all the specialized people in the world or United States. So when Anthony was in college at Georgetown University, he started Best Buddies, which was founded in 1989. And how it works is students sign up to be members on the computers, like Best Buddies is all around like across the US, and so there's a database on the computer website thing. And so it has the kids, I got to act like saying I'm my typical. So it has like the general kids do the computer, and so there's the specialized kids, and so it helps teach them how to use the computer, which is pretty awesome. And then they're matched with students with each other, and there's criteria, criteria, and they have to talk once a week, which is like eat lunch with them or have gym class with them, and activities twice a month, like it's going to plan to be our meetings, and we're just going to have fun activities for everyone to do together, and then go on an outing once a year. And how much it costs is $2,500 for two years, which includes chapter registration, the use of the names Best Buddies and the logo, which was on the first slide, program managers to give support and guidance and to help us figure out what to do next, and registration for an annual Best Buddies leadership conference at Indiana University, which I am hopefully going to go to this year, on the weekend of July 17 through the 20th. And then it's $400 per year after the first two years to help pay for the trip to Indiana. And it helps benefit students with disabilities and increase social interaction and relationships with general education peers like me, and it provides role models for academic, social, and behavioral skills so they'll learn from us too. And it provides opportunities and planning discussions for real-life situations for the kids when we go on our outings and then when we're all together in one big group, increase inclusion across academic and social environment. I know at my school, like the specialized kids are like on one side of the school and the rest of us are on the other side of the school, so we're kind of like separated. It's up for gym class and lunch, but that's pretty much it. And then it provides greater opportunity for peer-to-peer interaction. And then students without disabilities, it helps increase appreciation and acceptance for individual differences. They kept protecting that. Increase understanding and acceptance of diversity and respect for all, prepares all series for adult life in an inclusive society, and provides opportunities to master activities by practicing and teaching each other, which helps them across the board. Okay.
These are some pictures of students that are in my Life Skills, oops, Life Skills classes, and currently we have one teacher in our school who teaches family consumer science courses, and the students on their own decided to start planning activities to do with our students a few days out of the year. And this is, these are some photos of them interacting and hanging out and just having a good time and working on some social skills. And these are some different quotes from those students who are in the general education classrooms, and how they felt about the experience. So Allison said, "I think it's cool how they have iPads to communicate with the teachers and everyone else. It makes me happy to see them learn just how we do." Abby said, "Before I went in the classroom with you guys, I thought you just followed the Life Skills students around every classroom. I didn't realize the Life Skills students were actually trading for their jobs later in life. Also, I think going to gym with them was really fun. Just seeing their faces when we walked in really brightened my day." Zach, "I enjoyed being able to spend a couple of class periods to get to know the people in the Life Skills classrooms. I had fun working with them and seeing them smile made my day a lot better. They encouraged me to have a better outlook on life, to be grateful for what you have and the life and activities you get to do on a daily basis. I would love to work with the Life Skills students more and play with them in gym." And Alyssa, "I enjoyed getting to know the Life Skills students because when I am in school, I don't have classes with them. I'm no longer scared to talk to them because I know how I should interact with the Life Skills students. One of my favorite things was when we got to help work on the SMARTboard because I learned how some of their activities are different from ours." Travis, "I learned to be very patient when interacting with Life Skills students. I learned that not all special needs students are the same. You have to treat every single one differently according to their disabilities and limitations. I loved seeing the Life Skills students get excited that others were coming to help out in the classroom. I would love to help these kids again." And Ally, "I learned that patience is really one of the major keys in life. I learned that helping others changes their day in such a positive way. By helping the Life Skills students, it made me realize that that's all you really need to do, just help."
And so I found out about this club by watching the news randomly with my mother because we never watch the news in my house, and it had Belvedere North with, Belvedere North has Best Buddies at their school, and I'm like, hey, we really knew this at our school because when I was little, I was in the specialized program because I never taught, but now I never shut up. So, and so I was with some of those kids, and one of the kids in the class is Evan, and I was in the class with him, and I'm lucky that I was one of those kids to be able to get out of the program, but some of them are in the program for their whole entire lives. And I just really think it'll be a great thing to bring so that the kids can interact with us and get to know us, and we can get to know them on a personal level. And they all just mean so much to me. I always cry. And I really love this quote, "Only disability in life is a bad attitude" because you never see those little kids be sad. They always have a smile on their face every single day. Okay.
So what we're asking for tonight is, right now, we have about 40 to 50 students that are in the Life Skills and Functional Programs at Harlem High School, and we really want to bring this program there so everyone across the school can have interactions. I've talked to the teacher at Belvedere North, and she said it changed the entire culture of the school, just in the one year that they've had it there. Their homecoming king is actually a student with Down Syndrome who's in that program, and the school did that on their own. That wasn't coming from the teachers or any staff. The kids chose to do that and nominate him. So it's just had a tremendous impact there. So what we're hoping for is to get $1,000 to help us get this started and give us a jumpstart on our fundraising so we can bring this program here. Gabby's very passionate about it. I'm passionate about it, and I know our administration is behind us with this too. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Gabby and Kim, and we also have Harlem Principal with us this evening, Mr. Yarborough, waving hand, and next to him Cathy Martin, a stakeholder at Harlem High School. And before as your $1,000 goes, I'll ask staff to start the process through the proper channels and see if we can get that approved or not. Thank you for your presentation. Next, we have warrants. Trustee Beck.
Thank you, Your Honor. This evening, Administration Finance Committee, the committee met and approved warrants totaling $489,387.30, and I vote for their best.
Thank you, Trustee Beck. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Is there any discussions? I see none. Will a clerk take roll call, please?
Trustee Snodgrass?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Bailey?
Aye.
Warrants are approved. Next, we have administrative reports, and I'm pleased tonight to do a presentation to our Harlem High School student, Laissant Justin Porter. And if you'll step to the podium out there, Justin, and if your father would like to step up there with you, we have a presentation for you. Before I go to the podium, I'd like to note that Justin is Illinois State Scholar, is National Honor Society, top 10% of the class of 2015, President's Award for Academic Excellence Math Team, Biological Science Award, Student Council Award, Outstanding Math Student Award, World Youth in Science and Engineering Team Member, and a Southern Illinois University Bound. Give him a hand. Justin, on behalf of the mayor, the staff, the trustees, Harlem High School, and all of our citizens, we appreciate the great job that you've done as student Laissant in the last year, and this is just a small token of saying thank you. We appreciate you. Did an outstanding job.
I appreciate this award. I want to thank my dad because without him, this wouldn't have been possible. And I want to thank Harlem High School for having such amazing opportunities for me. It's been awesome. Thank you.
Well, you thanked me, but he did all the hard work, all the hours of studying he put in. Made me wish that I would have done that. So congratulations.
Next, we have Attorney Green.
I'm Nora Parton. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Green. Next, we have Community Development Coordinator Lucia Matlock.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to make an announcement about the new Majesny Park Meyer Supercenter opening tomorrow at 7:00 AM tomorrow. The ribbon cutting ceremony will be scheduled, or is scheduled at 2:00 in the afternoon. The store is nearly 200,000 square feet, and Meyer has hired more than 270 in the Rock River Valley, in the Rock River Valley to work at the new Majesny Park store. I'd like to encourage all residents to get out and take advantage of the grand opening specials.
Thank you, Lucia.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Next, we have Harlem High School student Laissant Justin Porter.
Thank you, Your Honor. This week's activities include a varsity baseball game at Hananeega on the 18th at 5:00 PM, and a varsity softball game at home on the 18th, also 5:00 PM. Then there is a varsity baseball game in Boylan on the 20th at 5:00 PM, and a varsity softball game at Hananeega on the 20th at 5:00 PM. And on Friday, there is a varsity baseball game at East on the 22nd at 5:00 PM, and a varsity softball game at East on the 22nd at 5:00 PM. On Thursday, the 21st, at 7:00 PM, there is a senior baccalaureate ceremony, and on Saturday at 10:00 AM is his graduation at BMO Harris Bank Center. The week of the 27th to 29th is final exams for Harlem High School, with the 29th being the last day for Harlem. Thank you, Your Honor. Oh, and I have a list to read for the 2015 Harlem High School Outstanding Scholarship Awards. It's going to be long, so everybody bear with me. Frank Aberon, Brooklyn College, $14,400 per year. Charles Barrios, Ball State University, $16,000 per year. Hannah Buchanan, Augustana College, $23,000 per year. Taylor Devonport, Carroll University, $15,500 per year. Caleb Damon, Northern Illinois University, $12,000 per year. Adam Janovic, Loyola University, $27,000 per year. Rachel Felton, Indiana University, and Purdue University, $11,000 per year. Tyler Flanningham, Michigan Tech University, $27,000 per year. Jade Goff, St. Ambrose University, $13,000 per year. Austin Hall, Robert Morris University, $26,000 per year. Connor Johnson, Northern Illinois University, $12,000 per year. Nicholas Johnson, Augustana College, $22,000 per year. Alex Carvras, Cornell College, $17,500 per year. Bethany Cook, Augustana College, $22,000 per year. Sam Willie, Judson University, $20,000 per year. Madison Markart, University of Kentucky, $25,000 per year. Molly Myers, Edgewood College, $13,500 per year. Jenna Mueller, Luther College, $20,500 per year. Nadia Popomak, Edgewood College, $16,000 per year. Justin Porter, Southern Illinois University, $22,250 per year. Brenna Riddle, Roosevelt University, $14,000 per year. Caitlin Schneeman, University of Illinois, $32,000 per year. Emily Scott, Ball State University, $32,675 per year. Kelly Sunstead, Carthage College, sorry, $19,500 per year. Tyanna Few, US Naval Academy, $100,000 per year. Savannah Wild, Augustana College, $22,000 per year. And that is it. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin. Just to sum that up, in our Harlem School District, that was 27 names that he read for a four-year period of time. That comes to $2,385,300 in scholarships awarded. I'll say it again, $2,385,300. $200. Harlem 122 is awesome. Next, we have Village Engineer Nick Arx.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just an update on a couple of projects. The Illinois 173 median project is currently out for bid. The bid opening is scheduled for May 29 at 10:00 AM here at Village Hall. The projects here south of Village Hall on Gilbert, Willshire, Liberty, Marquette, Pershing, Vermont, and Leland are all in full swing starting today. We've got three underground crews working, one on Pershing, one on Gilbert, and one on Liberty. We also have NICOR and CONIC crews out on site. We will get into those. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Next, we have Public Safety Supervisor Sergeant Doug Bushman.
Thank you, Your Honor. The bi-monthly police report for May 1 through the 14th, 908 calls for service in the village, 259 reports taken, 221 arrests. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Sergeant Bushman. Next, we have Committee and Trustee Reports. Do we have any reports this evening? Trustee Beck.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Administration Finance Committee has approved two orders and one resolution to go due June 3 for action.
Thank you, Trustee Beck. Trustee Johnson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just before I remind everybody about the Younger Heart Festival this weekend coming up, starts May 22, Friday at 6:00, 6:00 to midnight, and goes through May 25 on Monday. We have the parade on Saturday at 9:00. Younger Heart Idol Contest Saturday at 3:00 PM. Fireworks spectacular Saturday also at 9:30. And Kids' Day is Sunday noon to live. Hopefully, everybody can enjoy this great festival. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Johnson. Trustee Wilson.
And I'll piggyback on that on you seeing the parade on Saturday morning. Can't wait to see all those shiny faces that go by on our Second Street. Also, to piggyback on the Meyers opening, I hope everybody got their fruity bag in front of their house. A lot of great coupons and incentives in there, and if you happen to be home tomorrow at 9:00 AM, I'll be doing a behind-the-scenes tour of the Meyers facility on my day job, so can't wait to get inside the store. And on a sad note tonight, my neighbor Ben Hamlin, it's a name that some of you might recognize, passed away on Sunday morning. He was one of our community's founders. He's a former treasurer of this board, and bless his service to us in World War II. But Ben Hamlin passed away on Sunday morning.
Thank you, Trustee Wilson. Is there any more reports? I see none. The next item for consideration is the consent agenda. Are there any items that a trustee would like removed from the consent agenda to be considered separately? I see none. The consent agenda is accepted as presented. I will entertain a motion to approve all items under the consent agenda.
So may I?
I have a motion and a second. Could I have staff report, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. Item A of the consent agenda is ordinance 13-15. This is a text amendment to the Village Code providing for design standards for construction that occurs within the R3 and R4 zoning districts, first reading. Item B is Resolution 39R15, resolution to award the competitively bid reconstruction contract for copper, emerald, and ruby to Northern Illinois Service Company in the amount of $1,288,813.90. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Are there any trustee discussions? I see none. Will a clerk take roll call, please?
Trustee Johnson?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Bailey?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Snodgrass?
Nate.
Aye. Sorry, Mayor Bowlen.
Aye. Thank you, Lord. All items under consent agenda is approved. Next, we have new business. Ordinance 24-15, amend Chapter 9, Article 9.214J, increase number of BB licenses, first reading. I entertain a motion to approve.
So may I? Second.
I have a motion and a second. Could I have staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Since July of 2013, the maximum number of BB licenses allowed in the village has been three. Now, two more entities are seeking licenses for this type of video gaming boutique, so they've asked the limit of the licenses to be increased now to allow up to five BB licenses. This amendment to the Village Code requires two readings, so at the next board meeting on June 1, the board will consider these two new BB license applications in addition to the second reading for this ordinance to change the code to increase the number of BB licenses. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Is there any trustee discussions? I hear none. Will a clerk take roll call, please?
Trustee Kid?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Bailey?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Snodgrass?
Nate.
Aye. Sorry, Mayor Bowlen.
Aye. Thank you, Lord. All items under consent agenda is approved. Next, we have new business. Ordinance 24-15, amend Chapter 9, Article 9.214J, increase number of BB licenses, first reading. I entertain a motion to approve.
So may I? Second.
I have a motion and a second. Could I have staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Since July of 2013, the maximum number of BB licenses allowed in the village has been three. Now, two more entities are seeking licenses for this type of video gaming boutique, so they've asked the limit of the licenses to be increased now to allow up to five BB licenses. This amendment to the Village Code requires two readings, so at the next board meeting on June 1, the board will consider these two new BB license applications in addition to the second reading for this ordinance to change the code to increase the number of BB licenses. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Is there any trustee discussions? I hear none. Will a clerk take roll call, please?
Trustee Kid?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Bailey?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Snodgrass?
Nate.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Bowlen?
Aye.
Six and seven. I want to vote.
Ordinance 24-15 has been approved for first reading. Next, we have Resolution 42-R15, authorize utility tax advisory referendum. I entertain a motion to adopt.
So may I?
Do I have a second?
I'll second for discussion purposes.
I have a second. Could I have staff report, please?
As the board will recall, at the last board meeting, village president called for this resolution to be drawn up, identifying a question to be placed on the ballot for the spring election in 2016. So Resolution 42-R15 accomplishes that. The question that was placed on the ballot is, should the village continue to rebuild roads and related infrastructure for the benefit of its residents with 100% of the funds generated through the current utility tax? Would the question be yes or no? I'll entertain any questions on that. Reprand question.
Trustee Johnson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess I got a question for the attorney. The way this is worded, it sounds like to me it's just 100% yes or no. I thought it was supposed to be advisory too for the utility tax type thing?
It is advisory. The answer to the question would simply be, would it be non-normative?
It's just kind of confusing the way it's worded, but that's what it essentially.
Yep.
Okay. I guess I would like to amend this.
Okay.
I would like to put it as binding for the public to decide if we should have a utility tax, yes or no.
I don't believe, this certainly isn't prepared as a binding referendum. I don't believe we can do a binding referendum on this particular issue. I have to.
I think you can, but that's what my understanding is that you could.
That would be a wholesale change to what we've got here.
Correct. And then again, the second part of the equation is the percentage is going toward the road. So I would like to make that motion. I don't think you can, or.
I'm in a struggle with how to change what we have in front of us, which is set up completely as an advisory referendum, just transform it into a binding referendum. I think we have to go back to the drawing board.
Oh. I'm sorry.
Are you done, Trustee Johnson? Yes, Your Honor. Trustee Kid?
Is it possible to lay it over so we can make it binding and come back with a new?
Well, probably a better approach would be to vote on this or remove this and come back with a new, if it was the desire of the administration trustees to do that, and come back with a different resolution.
Trustee Johnson.
Thank you. Can I just revote my second then, and maybe since it doesn't look like it's going to be a binding, because I think that people should have their say, and the only way you're going to have your say is a binding type of resolution.
You're asking to withdraw your second?
Correct.
I ask the chair if you will accept the withdrawal of the second?
I will accept your withdrawal of the second.
Because you already had the second, I believe under Robert's rules, if anybody objects to that ask, if we can, if I can be second, you will accept my question.
Is there any objection? I hear none.
And then you go now, you can say, do I have a second?
Now, do I have a second to the motion? Do I have a second to the motion? Do I have a second to the motion? Resolution 42-R15. Resolution 42R15 motion has failed due to no second. Next, we have public comment. Do we have anyone who wishes to make a public comment? I see none. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So may. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.